Ladies and gentlemen, thank you guys for your attendance tonight. We're going to go ahead and get started, so we're going to start with a supplemental budget hearing. And so with that, I'm going to turn it over to, I don't know if I turn it over to Cease or to the superintendent.
Yes, to Cease. Well, let Cece take it away.
To me. Thank you. This evening, we have another change to our appropriations. And this is due to the casualty loss of the portable out here behind us. And we have received our insurance settlement for that, which is great, but we don't have anything appropriated to spend to replace it because we didn't know last June that this would be a needed expense. So at this time, we have a request to increase our capital budget in the general fund. This is not out of our capital projects fund because it is a casualty loss, an insurance loss. And so we have a request to increase the capital line item. And I, yeah, sorry that they're getting packets ready back there because there's a little problem, so I don't have that number printed out to show all of you. And it's actually, yeah, it's not in the regular appropriations. It is a, let me see if I can get it.
Please just give us a general.
It's, yeah, it's, the replacement of the unit itself is $68,800. There were some miscellaneous furnishings and things in there. It's around $75,000 to replace the items and hopefully be able to get that done before June 30th, so as part of this budget year.
How much did the insurance company send us?
They've actually paid for everything except, they hold a piece back until we provide receipts saying we've paid. So some of what they've reimbursed us for, for example, some of the labor, some of the fencing that we had put around it, they've reimbursed us for all of that at full cost. But the furnishings, they'll hold a piece back until we say we actually spent it to replace it. And our insurance is at full replacement value, so when we valued those items, they're at our current replacement cost, not the bookshelf that had probably been out there for 10 or 15 years or more.
So we replaced the unit, the majority of the costs are covered by insurance.
All of the costs will be, once we do the replacement.
Do we know what the future use, are we changing the plan for how that facility or building is used?
We don't have that decided yet. Our former tenant, the Central Use Boards, have found a long-term solution for themselves, a space that they feel will be comfortable for them. We are, hopefully, I've given Dr. Vickery the opportunity to create maybe some additional CTE-type space, something like that, that we'll be putting it to an actual, probably, educational use rather than, it won't be storage. We don't have need for that particularly, but we will be able to have it available for either curriculum, meeting space, or hopefully, actual educational space. In partnership with Community Services Consortium, for example, that maker space, we have a lot more opportunities for activities like that if we had some more space here.
Well, we have a document ready when we get to the business agenda?
Yes.
Consent agenda?
Yes, yes, I'm trying. We're trying to get that ready for you.
Well, we don't have to hold this up, though, waiting for that. I mean, I think we understand in general what the plan is.
Correct. And then, because it's a hearing, you have to ask if there are any public comments on this budget resolution.
Does anybody in the audience like to make a comment about the discussion about where we're going to put that money, when we get the money for the trailer? So do you guys understand what we're talking about? We had the fire in the trailer out back here. Insurance is going to give us a check, and so we have to make a decision where to put that in the budget. So if we put it in some places, we can't use the money right away.
Right.
So.
Yeah, it's funny, even if we get the revenue, we can't spend it unless you approve the adjustment. It is less than 10%, so we don't have to do, we don't, we're not asking for that. The reason we have the hearing is because it's in the capital line item, and we didn't have anything in that line item.
Right. So, okay.
There's a building that you don't even have a use for and have to replace. Like, you have to use the money to replace the buildings?
Yeah.
She was asking if we have to use the money to replace the building. I think the answer to that's yes.
Yes.
Capital funds can only be used for building purposes in that regard, so again, as Cece directed, that specifically is for funds. And she's talking specifically into the general fund, which is part of the money that we have access to, to be able to put those in place.
And it has to, we have to replace the exact items we lost.
So, hearing, no other comments, no other questions from the board. We're going to close the supplemental budget hearing, and we will call to order the March 4th board meeting, Central School District. And so let's start with the flag salute. Peggy, would you lead today?
Absolutely. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, again, I want to welcome you to the Central School District Board Meeting for March. Comments from the community are entertained during the time designated under Communications Public Comments. If you wish to speak to the board, please fill out a comment card. They look like this, they're out in the front. And Adriana's not here.
You can just bring them to us.
So you can run up here and just set them on the table. And speaker comments in this form are limited to three minutes, but the board welcomes additional information in writing. Personnel laws prohibit the board from hearing public complaints about an individual in an open meeting. All complaints must go through the board's approved process as outlined in Board Policy KL. This form may be found on our website or by calling the district office. Typically, a speaker's comment is taken under advisement to allow time for the board to review an issue. However, the board chair or other board members may ask a speaker for additional information or may convey to the speaker some information that addresses their comment. Please note on the speaker card if you would like to receive follow-up communication, and if so, what avenue is preferred. And thank you for your attendance at this meeting of the Central School Board. And with that, we are down to adoption of the agenda.
We have just one change because we do have two out-of-state travel requests that are in the business section. We're actually going to allow them to share out and give information during the administrative report, so they can do that, and then we can move forward with our adoption, so as we choose in the business section, so they have time to be able to present and then leave if they need to. So we're going to make that shift to be able to at least share that information with us this evening. That's the only change.
Okay. And with no other changes to the agenda, we are down to Classified Employee Appreciation Week, and you again.
So again, many times throughout the year, we get to recognize our staff, and so again, this is that week that we get to do that. So I'm going to read to you tonight just our classified employee appreciation. And so whereas the education of youth is essential to the future of our community, state, country, and world, and whereas classified employees work directly with students, educators, parents, volunteers, business partners, and community members, and whereas classified employees support the smooth operation of offices, the safety and maintenance of buildings and properties, and the safe transportation, healthy nutrition, and direct instruction of students, and whereas our community depends on the, depends on and trusts classified employees to serve students, and whereas classified employees, with their diverse talents and true dedication, nurture students throughout their school years. Now therefore be it resolved that the Central Board of Directors proclaims March 4th through 8th, 2019, to be Classified Employee Appreciation Week, and be further resolved that the Central Board of Directors strongly encourages all members of our community to join in this observation, recognizing the dedication and hard work of these individuals, adopted this fourth day of March, 2019. I am so thankful every day, even today, as I was in meetings, the opportunity to work with our classified staff and how our, both our licensed staff, administrative staff, and classified staff work together. I'm honored to just share this and to be, have Classified Appreciation Week. All this week, we're looking forward to it. So thank you, classified employees, for what you do each and every day for our students and this community.
Okay, so we're down to student reports and recognition, so we're going to talk about the CHS cheerleaders first.
We are. So, this is a fun, a fun moment. So just to give a little bit of background, Mrs. Smith shared with me, it's probably several months ago, that we had the conversation. I was checking in, how are things going? And she stated to me, well, we just put in, put our video in to potentially go to the national championships, and the process was that they, they performed their routine on the video, it was sent, and then they potentially would get invited if they qualified for the event. They did. And this last week went down and won the national championship. So I'm going to turn it over to you to share a little bit more, or one of your students to share just a little bit more about the competition with everyone, and then we have something for you. Yes, please.
I was not prepped for this.
It's all right.
On, I don't know. Let's see if I can get through this without crying. I can't, I usually can't. So the, the young athletes behind me, and they are every bit an athlete as any other sport at Central High School, asked if they could compete this year. And we have not competed at Central High School for as long as I've been there, which is now my eighth year as coach. And we don't have a paid position for it because competition happens in the winter season. And I told these girls, if they put in the work, I'd put in the time. And we went to our first competition in September, yes, September? It was a long time ago, where we took a snippet of our competition routine and presented it in front of a panel of judges, and they walked away with first place at that competition. And I think at that moment, we went, wow, we really have something. And so we worked on a routine and changed and changed and changed a routine so many times, their coach is a bit of a perfectionist, and submitted the video in December. We waited patiently and heard the day after Christmas, I think it was, that we had qualified. And we went down to Anaheim, and so the first time these girls had performed this routine, and it's two and a half minutes, in front of a panel of judges, was at our preliminaries. We were told nobody does that. We were told we were crazy and that this competition would eat us alive, and we're Panthers, and we said, go big or go home. So we performed Friday night, and our name was the last name called, and they didn't realize at the time that that meant we were going into finals in first place, beating out schools that were 2,000-plus kids, two 6A Oregon schools that were in our division. And we went into finals, performed last. We were the only team without any deductions, both performances, and we came out on top. And it was amazing to, to do that. So they're incredible, the trip could not have gone better. My mother, who if you know her, is not an easy woman to please, she, she constantly spoke of how well behaved these young women were, that they did what they were supposed to do, were where they were supposed to be at all times, and they are a very special group of young women, athletes, and just people in general.
So ladies, those of you that are here, can you please stand up for me? So, oh, no, no, you get to keep standing. So in recognition, I have for you, this certificate of recognition is hereby awarded to CHS Varsity Cheer Squad in recognition of their service to Central High School and the Greater Independence Monmouth Community through School Spirit, granted on this day, 4th of March, 2019, at Henry Hill Education Support Center, Independence, Oregon. And then it's signed by myself and Board Chair Moser. So congratulations, thank you for representing us so well. I, I say all the time, we're going to be nationally known, and you guys have started that trend, so I appreciate that.
Sweet. So next up are the Power Peers.
So I'm here to give a quick Power Peers update. My colleague was unable to make it today, so I'm here filling in. Let's see, let's start off with the pantry. So as you all know, our pantry has done a lot of good for our school, and it's going pretty well. I have written here that we have a couple of needs. Our needs include snacks, examples would be fruit snacks and granola bars, and also feminine hygiene products such as shampoo and deodorant, we would need some of those. So that's it for the pantry. And right now, we are in the process of making our empathy video. We just got done with our work ethic video. So that's that. And our Disneyland fundraiser, we have a fundraiser going on. We were donated a couple of Disneyland tickets, very nice Disneyland tickets, and they were no cost to us, so that means that all the proceeds we earn from this fundraiser will go to funding the Power Peers program. And so tickets can be bought from any Power Peers member or Ms. Thu. And yeah, the drawing will be held March 22nd, so if you're interested, let the bookkeeper know, or Ms. Thu, or a Power Peers student, and we can get you a ticket. And that looks like, that looks like it's it. That's all I have for today. Thank you.
Thank you.
In ASVAC class, we had elections last week for ASVAC positions, and we are getting the results this week. Soon, we will give out applications for appointed positions. Unity, Unity Week was a month ago, and we did Candygrams for Valentine's Day, and at the end of the week, we passed them out. Spring Fling Week is coming up, so we are planning for that. And Mr. and Mrs. Central Pageant is April 13th, so you should, guys should come and support. And, oh yeah, do you have any questions for me? Okay, thank you.
I want to quickly share, just while both of these young people are here, I have been working with several groups at the high school, including Power Peers and ASVAC, specific to, as we've talked about in one of our retreats, having a student superintendent advisory council. And so we are working, and we have actually an application almost done, we're doing some final drafting together for that. Also in that process, we are working with them, as we have talked about having a student representative on the board, and so working with them also on those final stages of what that process would look like, we'll bring that to you all. But I am, I'm just really thrilled, every opportunity I get once a month to go have conversation at the high school with several of the groups. I've shared with them, once we get that going, we'll start to have conversation about how do we get the voices of the middle school, and then continue forward with that, because again, I want them to help drive some of those decisions, as student voice is very important. So I am very thankful for their voices that they, in developing this as we work towards this. So thank you.
Do we want to tell the bar's pretty high after we met the gal from Beaverton?
We, we got, we had some good conversations. We're looking forward to having board member, student representative on the board, for sure.
Yeah. So, all right, so are we doing public comment, or are you going to do the other thing first?
Nope, public comment.
Dwight, did you have an app, did you have one? Okay, so we have one from Ms. Laura Way. I know she's back there. She's going to comment about our meeting at the legislature in Salem and the team of people that we took over there.
Good evening, thanks for having me. I wanted to give a quick report on a, an opportunity that I was invited to by Superintendent Kubista to meet with representatives and participate in the OSBA, am I saying that right?
Correct.
OSBA Lobby Day in Salem. We, the team that Superintendent Kubista put together was made up of board members and classified union members, classified president, myself, the union president, certified union president, and representatives from all walks of central life. And we were the only team in our group to have such a diverse group. It was really amazing, as we went around the room and people introduced themselves, it was board member, board member, board member, board member, board member, board member, union president, union president, teacher, superintendent, board member, board member, board member. And it was really nice that we were able to have that kind of voice in such a place. So I want to thank you for inviting me in the first place. The opportunity was unique because that morning, it was revealed that the co-chair budget was a greatly reduced number than what school districts were going to be planning on in the state of Oregon in order to create the budget that we end up working off of. In fact, it was about $2 million shorter than, than that, or more.
$200 million.
$200 million, my bad. That's a decimal point error, students.
Says the math teacher.
Remember the math thing.
It's all good. So yeah, that's a lot of money, if you didn't know, and this was a surprise. And we, instead of going into those meetings as we had prepared with, how do we get to QEM, how do we have the quality education model fully funded schools, instead, we were having to talk about how we would be impacted by such a reduction in budget. And I think our team was amazing in being able to tell, I think there were eight different legislators and/or their aides that we ended up talking to from both our area and other areas in the state. And each time, we had eloquent speakers, both from our group and from the other groups that we were paired with, speaking about what it would look like for us to have to suffer those kinds of losses, those kinds of budgetary losses, and that a budget that low would be a cut budget for everybody across the state, that we would have to find ways to, to keep going. And I think that, that was heard. I think that our voices were heard, and we were listened to, and I think that we're moving in the right direction to move that number up. And I think a lot of that had to do with the fact that, that we were there. So that's my report. It was a very worthwhile opportunity, but the best thing was that in Central School District, we're, we have the vision and the bravery to bring diverse voices to the table when we're asked to do so, and we were the only ones who did that. So thanks again for the opportunity.
Thank you, Laura.
Or representative for the CEA.
Laura's representative from the CEA is?
My name's Patty Nosack, and I am the billing rep for the CEA here at the district office. And I've not always been a teacher. I first came into the district as a classified substitute, which gave me good experience in different types of rooms, in the library, in the teen parent program, and mostly in special ed rooms, which led to a summer position, which led to being hired at Talmadge Middle School as an instructional assistant. And I was there for two years, this is way back in the early 2000s, and I found my passion there, I wanted to go back to school, and got my teaching license and masters, and came and worked in the district as a teacher. First as a student teacher, then at Monmouth Elementary School. Eventually, I was six years in the basic life skills classroom at the high school, and now I find myself working here at the district office, which is a unique position as a teacher, because we house so many different departments here. We have the superintendent's office, of course, and the teaching and learning department, which is in charge of curriculum throughout the district. And it's amazing the pursuit they have given to grants to obtain curriculum, the human resources departments here, the business office, food services, and I'm on the student services team. And you would think, being here with such a diverse group, that we would be segregated, but I've found that it doesn't feel like that here, it feels like a family. Every Monday morning, we meet and have a check-in to see how we're doing. Cece and I were just talking about this recently, and it never feels like administrators, teachers, and classified staff. It feels like a family working together to see what we can do to make and help this district work. But I am one of six, seven teachers here. One of the teachers is in Helica, she's like a one-woman wonder, and the teaching and learning department, she oversees the bilingual scholars program and grants that support tutoring and after-school clubs. And the rest of us work on the student services team. And we, we aren't often here at the district office, we're actually in buildings, supporting, but our jobs are to either be program specialists or support specialists. We provide training support and consultations to teachers and classrooms, along with helping to assess students who are being evaluated for eligibility in special education. We also provide training to schools and MANT system, which is designed to give schools the skills and strategies necessary for de-escalating, resolving, and preventing conflict and aggression between people. It's just been an honor to, for me to work in all the different roles I've had, because it's given me a wide lens to do what I do as a support specialist. And I've enjoyed every part of, everything I've done here in the school district, so I thank you for letting me speak. Do you have any questions for me? Okay, that's it.
Thank you. Say that again? I have another?
Just additional.
An additional?
Yes, it's a lengthy agenda tonight.
Holy moly, okay. So, so all the folks that are in the cheerleader group that had your little presentation, you guys don't have to stay for this. This is getting really deep for us.
Well, you have one.
Oh, I have one more comment card.
Okay.
So Jennifer, you want to talk about the national cheerleader team?
Hi, Jennifer Flores, for those of you who don't know me. I do know Vicky Watkins, and I do know that she's difficult to please, but I wanted to add on top of Vicky, there were people outside of our school. There were people at this competition with teams from multiple states, Nevada, California, Oregon, Washington, you know, many, many states were represented there. And there were states outside of Oregon who recognized that our young ladies were just that, young ladies, very polite, very well-mannered, very professional. And so I just wanted to add that it wasn't just Vicky who noticed, there were people outside, and I think that that's important. I think that that says a lot about our, our athletes, our young ladies, and our coaching, and I just wanted to make sure that that was made known. That was it. I'm done.
Thank you.
So we're going to jump down, we're going to jump down to the Academica group, talking about their, their out-of-state travel trip. So, Mrs. Laister, I think you're coming up with a couple of folks.
Hello, my name is Tori Bucelo, and I am the current president of the Academic Decathlon Club. So if you wish to read the very eloquently written Academic Réactionnel by Ms. Laister, it's in the agenda somewhere a few pages in from where we're at currently. But in essence, Academic Decathlon is just as the name suggests, an academic competition between 10 subjects, including, what do we have? We have math, economics. ten subjects, including, what do we have? We have math, economics, literature, art, music, science, and history as well. And then we also do two speeches, one prepared, one unprepared, an interview, and also an essay, all nationals and multiple times throughout the year as well. So, every year, we have it on a different theme. Last year, it was on Africa. This year, it's on the 60s, the transformational decade. And next year, it will be on health and wellness, focusing on disease and the history of healthcare and everything associated with that. So, as the only team in Oregon, we have, along with the very heavy burden of winning the state trophy five years in a row, we are eligible for nationals automatically. So, we wish this to be able to, be allowed to go. Last year, myself and another member, we're able to win Oregon's first-ever national medals. So this year, we're excited to see what we can bring to the table. So, thank you. We very much appreciate the district's support.
Thank you.
We will approval, do approvals in the business part of the agenda.
Okay.
So, yes.
Perfect. Thank you so much, you guys.
Yes, thank you. Yes. Again, looking forward to another few national championships coming back. The next is, let me get down, out-of-state is symphonic choir to Canada.
Good evening. Yes, planning on a trip the end of March, actually, the last couple of days of spring break. The kids, to minimize the number of school days missed, they will just be missing the first day after spring break. So they're taking the last couple of days of their spring break. We leave Thursday, head on up to Port Angeles, go through Victoria, Vancouver, come back down. And all along the way, we'll be stopping and working with professors at different universities. I'll be visiting at least three college campuses, working with three different professors from that area. We also, just today, secured performing at a church for one of the days. So it's very much a work, a working trip. They will do some fun, some fun things, sightseeing and things like that, but they'll be singing and working, because when we come back, two days later, we perform at our first competition, district-level competition to qualify for the state level, where hopefully, we can go back and hold our title from last year. So, it's pretty amazing that this group, in just three years in the 5A category, got up to first place. That's a, it's a big feat. And so I think it's only helpful that they get out and work with other people and do that. So that's why I'm asking if we can do that. And if there's, Steve Love's gonna be coming with us. I don't know if he knows that or not. His wife might, his wife might have volunteered him without him knowing. I don't know. So he can give you some more information when we come back. But there's twelve, I think twelve, eleven or twelve different chaperones, and sixty, sixty-some kids going. So, giving up their spring break to go, so.
Thank you.
No problem.
Thank you. A zipline course?
I think he did clearly say there would be a little bit of fun.
There would be a little bit of fun.
How can it be fun in the middle of winter?
I would, I would put top.
Alright.
Okay, and so then we are on to...
My, my screen moved.
Get Fit. Teresa, are you here? I'm still reading the behavior contract and the trip plan for Vancouver.
Alright. Well, good evening. My name is Teresa Whitehall. I'm the employee wellness coordinator. And I just wanted to give you a little update about what's been going on with Get Fit and where we're headed. First of all, I want to showcase the people that are kind of the unsung heroes that are in the buildings, being the champions, connecting with their fellow employees to encourage them to make healthy and, and well choices. So, at Ash Creek, we have Brittany Matthews, and, excuse me, she's out on maternity leave right now, so Lori Leone is taking her place. At Independence Elementary, there's Meg Grinder. Monmouth Elementary is Carrie Kirkman. At Talmage, we have Sophie Vasquez. At Central, Denise Wallace. Here at the district office is Joanne Diven and Marcella Rossi. And at Transportation, Troy Everly. Although Troy can't come to our meetings, he is, he is the bomb at the transportation department and has those people, they're, they're being fit right now. And then the assistant program coordinator that works closely with, closely with me is Sherri Higgins. And she's at Talmage also. So she, she is one of the building champions as well. And I must say, Sherri's the one who started it all, so she has lots of expertise and is really encouraging to her staff there. So, most of those people that I just named off have been on that committee from the very beginning, from when we first got our startup grant. And they have continued to serve, feel a passion for that program. And they all hope to see that, that program continues, and continues to flourish. So, starting at the beginning of the year, we've done some different things, things ranging from healthy jar in a lunch, let me re-say that, sorry, a healthy lunch in a jar, to yoga and boot camp. Boot camp continues to go on. That was one of the physical activities that we started when we first got the grant. And we struggle every time to get those twenty people, but we always wind up with them. And sometimes you might see them out on the grass by Talmage, doing their workouts and stuff. I was one of those for a while. It's pretty comical, but it's a good time. The Walker Tracker program is now a staple. We started that in the last couple of years. That's an online program where they can plug in their steps every day, and we do some competitions around that. So it's a way to encourage people to be up and moving and that kind of stuff. So, and the program doesn't cost us anything. It comes through OA Choice Trust. So we just basically buy prizes for those people and the competitions and that kind of stuff. One of the things that we encourage during November and December is a program called Maintain, Don't Gain. So, people are really working hard, watching the calorie intake and their physical output to maintain those pounds that they have, or even lose some during those terrible, horrible holiday times. So, we do fun activities to help de-stress people, like we've been having a monthly poker run walk. People have been enjoying. We started a new program called Foodie Adventures. So we've been visiting local restaurants here in Salem, Corvallis, that offer alternative meals, so vegetarian-type meals. We go and we at least try those. We might order something else, but we're at least trying those different alternatives that are healthy for us. And one of the most popular things that we have in the fall and the spring are hikes. We've been working on shifting our wellness focus from that wellness model into a well-being model. So we've been looking at the whole person. And instead of just offering activities that surround their physical and nutritional well-being, we've been looking at mental health, their stress levels, financial health, and offering activities around those as well. So, looking at the whole person and finding those areas that are causing things that are gonna deteriorate their health. It's not just our physical habits and our nutritional habits that affect our health. So, we've been making really good progress with that. And with that model, we introduced a new activity this winter called the Happiness Advantage and 21-Day Gratitude Challenge, where participants read the book, The Happiness Advantage by Sean Acor. And then they, for 21 days, they've kept a journal. And the three things that they highlighted in the journal, not the three things, sorry, there were five, but they highlighted three things that they were grateful for during that day. One thing that they found positive that occurred during their day, an act of kindness that they did for someone else, the type of exercise and how long they did it in that day, and then a meditation time where they took maybe five minutes to just breathe, that they did a mindfulness activity, whatever it is that they did to kind of de-stress, kind of block out all the extraneous stuff, and brought themselves back down into a calm state. So they are almost completed with those 21 days. Wednesday of this week will be their final day. And it's been really exciting. We've had 156 participants signed up, and 122 have followed through to the end. So, this tells us that this was a really important thing that they wanted to have happen. And I'm hearing from people now that are saying, man, I wish I'd signed up for that. And so they're looking forward to us doing more activities in this vein for them. I heard from people, this was the very best activity. I'm having my family do it along with me. I even had pictures sent to me of one of their children sitting in the hot tub, now reading the Sean Acor book. So, also some other comments that this is changing my outlook on my life here at home and at work, how I do things. So, it's been very impactful. And in talking today, we just had a wellness meeting with our group today, and they are looking forward to offering something like this next week. He has many books, so we're kind of thinking we might still do like a Level One, which would be this. And then people who participated in this would maybe read one of his other books and take it a step further. So, there's tons of excitement out there about this. And we're thrilled that it's been across the board. It's been administrators clear to the transportation. There are people across the district that have taken a part of this, not just certified teachers. So, I feel very chagrin right now because I was in such a hurry to leave the meeting that I left your books and journals in our meeting room. But we have them for you. The Wellness Committee felt like it was important that we share this with you. So, we will be bringing you the Sean Acor, the Happiness Advantage book, and a journal, so that you can start in on your own path and find out what it's all about. So, we really look forward to continuing this program next year and have lots of exciting things planned for the future. So, we hope that you will continue to support it and take advantage of all the happiness that you find in the book and the journal. So, thank you. You guys have any questions for me? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So, we're on to the presentation by Flow Analytics on their report that they gave us.
Cece, I'll turn it to you to sort of take the lead.
Sure, I'd like to introduce Alec Brash and Jerry Olrich from Flow Analytics. And this is the company that we have retained to do a, an extensive report for us. And the amount of data that they collected from our district and from partners such as both of our cities and our county to try and develop this are pretty amazing. They have a, a exciting presentation for you, filled with some wonderful graphs and lots of, lots of, lots of data nerd stuff. So, I will turn it over to them.
Thank you so much for that lovely introduction, Cece. Very kind of you. We really appreciate the opportunity to get to do work for your district. My, I am Jerry Olrich, as Cece mentioned, and this is Alex Brash. And we are with Flow Analytics, and we came down from Portland today. And I just want to say before we get started that I feel like we've been to a lot of, we've done a lot of these presentations, Alex, tonight. And this is the neatest, really the neatest school board meeting that I can think of that we've been to, seeing like the cheerleaders and then the Academic Decathlon, and having students like presenting to the board. It's really impressive. So it's been fun to get to watch. And also to say that it sounds like you do have a fairly, I mean, as we've seen, a fairly busy agenda tonight. So, we can kind of try to tailor the level of detail that we go into, to what you would like. So I think we'll try to start out at a certain level. And if you would like more or less detail, just let us know. And also, feel free to interrupt with questions. But basically, we've handed over the report, and we just want to make sure that you have all of your questions answered about the work that we've done while we're here. So, look forward to any questions. And with that, I think I'll turn things over to Alex to start out our presentation on really cool data.
Thanks, Jerry. So, I'm gonna step through our enrollment forecasting methodology, talking kind of about the three main components. The first being a student enrollment assessment, and the second, demographic and land use analysis, and finally, moving on to the enrollment projections themselves. So, the first part, being the student enrollment assessment, is based on the student information system that we receive from the district. So that's the list of enrolled students. And this is as of October 1st of 2018, so that it aligns with the submission to the Oregon Department of Education. So, once we have that, we are like a geospatial company. So we take information from the district, such as the mapped, you know, district boundary, attendance areas, school locations, and bring that into our GIS system. So this, what we're looking at here is just a map of the district. But then, more interestingly, is once we have the student information, we geocode them to their household location. And we can look at things like the student density, so the inset map being, of course, of Monmouth and Independence, and just seeing the distribution of students. And then, we want to point out, just at the beginning here, what type of forecasts we prepare, because there are two different ways to look at enrollment. The first being maybe more familiar to principals and staff and parents, is the building and program attendance, and the number of students you expect in a given school. Common ways to say that would be like the actual enrollment are students in the desks. But when we think about it in terms of attendance areas, and maybe thinking ahead to boundary reviews and things like that, we also prepare forecasts. And that's what we have prepared for you guys, a residence base, the number of students that live within an attendance area. And it makes a lot of sense for your district, too, because there isn't a lot of shifting. We're gonna see in the next slide that there is some choice going on. But it makes sense to look at this in terms of where students live, they attend their neighborhood school.
And I'll just, I meant to say in the introduction, but as you can see in the report, the forecasts we did were for a 10-year horizon. So that's, that's why, yeah, anyways, just in case you were wondering.
So I know this is a little small. I think some people have seen this on their computer. But I'm gonna walk us through real quick. This is what we call a residence attendance matrix. So we're kind of looking at those two ways to view enrollment. And we can look at Ash Creek Elementary School in the first line as an example. So, the amount of students living in the Ash Creek attendance area is that second column, residence count of 564 students. And as you expect, many of them, 498, actually attend Ash Creek. But there are portions that, for whatever reason, choice and so forth, go to attended, Independence Elementary School and Monmouth. So that amount is 66 students, or, in other words, a transfer out rate of 11.7 percent. The flip side to that is if you look at the column for Ash Creek, you can see the total amount that attend are 540. And some of them are coming from Independence and Monmouth attendance areas. And then when you also factor in some students coming from out of district, you get a K through 5 total of 545 that actually attend Ash Creek, which is representative of a 8.6 percent transfer in rate. So it just kind of shows the kind of choice and mixing that happens, even in a smaller district with three elementary school attendance areas. You can kind of see some interesting things, just with Ash Creek, having a higher transfer out rate. out rate compared to the other two and a lower transfer in rate. So we did the same thing for middle and high school, but as you'd expect, not as interesting with just one attendance area, so I'll skip over that. So there's more that goes into the student enrollment assessment that we then feed into our enrollment forecasting. But then we move on to a land use analysis to help us look at changing demographics across the district. We start out by getting a lot of data. We are nerds, and we like to gather as much as we can. So statewide things that we can glean are city limits, the urban growth boundaries. And then we contact the county and cities to get things such as parcels, zoning, comprehensive plan, anything that's really helping us figure out how residential growth or decline is Monmouth also actually recently completed a buildable lands inventory, so that's very helpful information to get a sense of the potential for buildout in the area and partially vacant and vacant lands. So this is a slide showing kind of the types of...
Did you, did you mention that we also interview the planners themselves?
Oh, no, I didn't yet, but we will get to that.
Oh, sorry.
No, no, thanks. So we get things such as zoning, the buildable lands inventory, permit data, and we have to synthesize that into something useful for our enrollment forecasting model. So as Jerry just mentioned, we also talk to the planners themselves and get a lot of interesting information. So I'll just hit a couple of high points, things we've learned from our conversations, and show why it's important to not just look at the data from the desktop, but also have a conversation with people, local planners. Jerry will get into this a little bit more, why it's important, but of the students enrolled in the district for that October 2018 student information system, 87.6% reside in single-family housing, while 12.4 reside in multifamily housing. Right now, we're looking at a map of Monmouth zoning and a couple facts about the city. You guys are familiar with some of these, but we looked to Portland State University's Population Research Center to look at their certified population estimates. The city of Monmouth was 9,890 residents, based on that July estimate, and they project the annual growth rates through 2030 to be an average of approximately 1.5%. We, in our conversation with the planner for Monmouth, we discussed where development is going to happen, likely in the district, in the city of Monmouth, mostly in the boundary between the city limits and the urban growth area. To be expected, that's where the partial and vacant land is available, so think to the south and the west portions of the city. We go into detail for specific important developments, such as one that's happening, think it would be at the west side of Highway 99, south of Gwynne Street, that being about 119 multifamily unit, affordable housing. And Jerry's going to touch on why that's also important to understand that information because the affordable housing in single-family is different than a multifamily complex. So just a couple of facts on Independence. It is actually growing a bit faster than Monmouth at approximately 2.3%. In fact, if that projection holds true, it'll overtake Monmouth in general population by the year 2030. There's also a reasonable amount of vacant land, about 260 acres to the southwest portion of the city that's adjacent to Monmouth. So during our conversations with the planners, we talked about the approximately 140 single-family units to be expected as part of a Phase 1 on 13th Street and west of 8th. And I will mention for both the Monmouth and Independence, BLI and the information we've gleaned from the planners, that these are assumptions, and the pace of development is something we have to discuss with them and try to work into our forecasts, especially with the BLI. That's talking about the land, its potential in infinity and how much can be built there. So we need to think about, as Jerry mentioned, what's going to actually be built in 10 years in our forecast horizon. And lastly, speaking to Polk County, they do have approximately a 1% growth rate over the last couple of years, but that's expected to decline in the next 10 years to about a half a percent.
And that's just the unincorporated part of the county?
So once we have all the information, I know this is a little hard to see up on the screen, but basically this is a map of Monmouth and Independence with the aerial imagery to help us see where development's occurring. Based on that BLI, the proportionally sized dots, the yellow representing single-family potential development, and the blue or purple representing multifamily development. And in the report, we include kind of the details for each of those and some of the assumptions around them in terms of student yield factors that Jerry will touch on. And that all feeds into the forecasting. That'll pass off to Jerry.
Cool. So yeah, the funnest stuff, which is the forecasting. So hopefully you'll find this interesting. Actually, we can just go ahead and go to the next slide. We, as Alex mentioned earlier, the forecasts we prepared are, when we get to them later, the ones that are listed for each school, those are the number of students that we forecast that will be living within each of the attendance areas, as opposed to specifically building, building attendance. So just bear that in mind. But the, some of the source data that we use for the forecast, in addition to everything that Alex just talked about that we incorporate, we also pull historic enrollment data from the Oregon Department of Education, which helps us look at some of the recent trends in like grade progressions, you know, first graders one year turning into second graders the next year, that sort of thing, and just trends in your district. We grab live birth data to mothers residing in the zip codes 37, or it's 97351 and 362, I think, that are, 361, yeah, that are the, cover the majority of the district. And so we get that data from the Oregon Health Authority. And as of the time that we did forecasts for you, I think we had data for 2017 births, but not yet for 2018, so we had to forecast that. And then, as Alex mentioned, we poll forecasts from the Portland State University Population Research Center, which are at county and UGB level, as well as their estimates of current populations. So what we're doing there is just trying to, we can basically correlate Portland State University's population forecasts with housing growth because they're fairly well-related. And then that helps us figure out how many housing units we think will get built within like the first five years, so by 2023, and then between 2023 and 2028. We don't take, we don't try to match their numbers exactly, but we, they recently prepared those forecasts, and they also did a lot of lake work to come at those. So we try to use that as much as we can. And then we have some other data sources, too, on just pulling population data. As far as methodology, there's some different kind of names for this, but there's, but they're all sort of the same thing. For grade progression model, it's kind of similar to like cohort survival, and there's some other names. There's a couple of methodologies we use. I'll actually talk about that second. What districts are probably not doing themselves is kind of a full-fledged sort of demographic forecasting effort, which what we do is, we call it cohort component model. That's a standard, standard model in demography. And that's where we look at births and deaths is, of course, not as much a thing for school-aged children, but then also in-migration, out-migration, looking at patterns and population data for school-aged children in your district, and then pulling in, pulling in everything that we can get about housing expectations, because that relates to in-migration. So we put a lot of work into trying to figure out what the school-aged children population will be in the future. And that's something that you have to look to the future to figure out. You can't just base it off of the past, which is what grade progression model and like cohort survival methods basically kind of carry forward, like what's happened the past few years and assume it'll happen in the next few years. And that's a pretty good assumption for, for short-range forecasting, like one or two or three years. But if you're trying to go 10 years out, you kind of have to do something that's a little more holistic. So we get to bring that value to you guys. Something that's a big, a big factor in doing the forecasting is trying to figure out what the kindergarten classes are going to look like each year. And so our forecasts are, have a 10-year horizon, but we, we include, for example, what we think the kindergarten class size will be for each year. And that's largely driven by the number of births that happen in the district. And this, hopefully you guys can all read the numbers that are up there. I should be wearing glasses right now, so it's literally all blurry to me. But I know that, I happen to know that on the, on the top, it's showing births by year. And as I mentioned earlier, we had data through 2017, actual data, and then we had to forecast for the years beyond that. And we, the way we forecasted that was by looking at kind of the average of the last few years, and then looking at PSU's forecast of how many women of childbearing age there will be, et cetera, et cetera. So we think that the births will start to climb back up a little bit. And then you can see on, on the row below, it shows historically kindergarten class sizes for five years after those birth years, and then a percent, so you can see what percent that K-class is of the, of the births. And that just helps us to try to figure out what the future conversions are going to be. So I think you can see there that we kind of ramp up over the first few years to assuming that like 88% of the births that happen in the district will show up as kindergartners, not necessarily the same kids, but net, net. And the reason why we have it going up a little bit is because we see a lot of, there's going to be a lot of population and housing growth, and so we're, that's why the 88% is a little bit higher than some of the other ones for years prior. Any questions I can answer right now, or do you want me to speed things up a little bit, or? Okay, cool. All right. Just wanted to check. For all of the housing data that we get from the planners and also just from their databases and whatnot, the question obviously for you guys is, how many students are each of these units going to generate? So we, as far as student generation rates, we try to do the best job we can at assuming or, you know, guessing at what the generation rates will be for different developments. And things that play a factor in that are looking at data we have for the existing neighborhood that that development's going into, as well as what have the planners told us, well, the affordable housing project that Alex mentioned earlier, we would assume that that might have a little bit higher yield of students than just regular multifamily. So we used a little bit of a higher rate of .25 students per, per unit, as opposed to .2 for other multifamily. And it would have probably been even higher, but there were also, there was a good chunk of, I think, one-bedroom apartments in that development, so those ones probably won't have students. And then for, there tends to be higher yields for single-family housing, and you can just see here that we had fairly high rates, I think it's .7 something, for, for a lot of the development in the city of Independence, because the homes are more affordable than Monmouth. So we expect more younger families and more students to move in. So that's, this is kind of how we take that housing data and try to convert it into students. But we also have to forecast what's going on in all of the other existing housing, which I won't go into detail on. But we have a product of that analysis, which is, this is our highest-level forecast result, which is the middle orange line is our forecast, our, I guess, most probable of what we think the total district enrollment will be for each year. And then the, the red and the blue lines are just showing that there's some uncertainty in that, especially the further we go out in time. Overall, we can, like, the red line would be like if, if Intel decided to build a manufacturing facility here in like the next two years and the economy just went crazy. But we really think that the orange line is what's going to happen. And within that, you can see that we are forecasting growth, and it's, I think Alex mentioned that is, in terms of total population, we have Monmouth, PSU has them forecasted to grow at like 1.5% per year in population, and then Independence is 2.3, and the unincorporated county is 0.5. This works out to about 1.6% for students. So we think that it's going to be fairly in line with total population growth. And some of it's just, a lot of it's fueled by the, the new, by housing, and the fact that, that if PSU's forecasts hold true, there will be much more growth than what you've seen since like 2010, as well as, there, there has been decreases in fertility rates, but we don't, we're also leaning on PSU. We don't think that that's going to continue to go down, so we think that the birth rates have kind of stabilized, and now the population of mothers is just going to start going up.
Question about that trend?
Yeah, sure.
If you look back over the last five to 10 years, it's been slight, kind of was up and then it's been going down. Does that correlate with the housing data in that timeframe? Because it sounds like the basic conclusion is, yeah, overall state's going to be up, but the housing data kind of confirms that. If you look back over the last 10 years, have we just not seen that much housing development?
That, that is true. We didn't look specifically at, I don't think we looked super specifically at housing, but we did look at population, and they're fairly tied together, because a lot of population growth is driven by housing. Some of it is natural increase, which is births over, like if there's more births than deaths. But basically, the, the recession had like a lingering effect that just kind of slowed things down, you know, quite substantially. So I don't have the numbers in front of me, but I want to say that for the first five years, we think the housing and population growth is going to be, I want to say it's something like almost twice as much as what has happened since, I think, 2013 or so, or over the last five years. So hopefully that answers your question. But it is all, it is still all speculative, because we don't know where things might go with the economy and whatnot, but based on what we're seeing right now. So this is breaking up that middle line into elementary at the top, and then high school in the magenta color in the middle, and then, and then middle school at the bottom. They're just showing what we think each of those grade, grade groups will be like by, by year. And the most prominent things we can see here is that elementary is just kind of going, going up and up and up. And that just happens to be with like the birth numbers going back up, and then a lot of the generation from new housing being skewed towards younger families. And then there's like a little bit of a lag effect where, with that showing up in the subsequent grades. But what the report says, and you can't see on here because we only did our forecast through 2028, but it would seem if what hap, if what we forecasted here with elementary school holds true, then eventually after 2028, the middle and high school growth rates will probably be higher than the elementary. It just takes time for, for that to propagate through all the grade levels. So I think next we have, these are our forecasts of students residing within each attendance area for each year through 2023 and then for 2028. So I don't think that anything on here is probably particularly surprising. We do see, of course, Ash Creek and Independence going up the most. And Monmouth, we have going down a little bit, even though there's going to be development within Monmouth. We used lower student yields because the homes are more expensive, and there is less development overall. If you look at the map that shows the developments, there's a lot there for the buildable lands inventory, but as Alex mentioned, some of that's not going to get built, some of, some of those lots are not going to be built until like 50 years from now. So any questions on this, on this one right here? Yeah, a fair, fair bit of growth for Ash Creek and Independence. And then the next slide is middle school, which I can't read the numbers, but if I recall, it's fairly steady through 2023, and then between 2023 and 2028, that's where we start to see more of a, more of a jump. And then a high school was a little And then high school was a little bit flipped from that where more of the growth we see happening in the first five years and then it kind of like stabilizing for a while. But overall, like I said, this is, I think, you know, 1.6% per year is a pretty good clip for enrollment to be growing at. So I don't think there's a lot of districts that we're working with right now that are seeing that high of a growth rate. I know that the last, I think, the last two years, it went, I think it went down a little bit and then down a little bit, but all indications to us looking, especially looking at the individual class sizes and whatnot, are that you will see an increase starting next year and then we see a, you know, sustained increases after that. So that's exciting. And then on this slide, we do have it broken down by grade and by year. This is a lot of numbers to try to look at right now, so I won't try to I won't try to dissect this too much, but hopefully for planning purposes, it's helpful to also have these numbers by by grade by year so you can try to figure out when, you know, like maybe a larger class size is going to leave elementary and go to middle school and whatnots to help with your staffing and that sort of thing. And I think that's actually the last slide we have on the forecasts, or that's the last slide we have total in totality. So are there any questions? Any overarching questions or concerns? Oh, yeah, yeah, sure. The that one right there.
I was still looking at that one.
Oh, yeah, sorry. Maybe we should keep that up there then while we see if there's it's a lot of data to digest. I would just say that, yeah, there's there's quite a bit of analysis goes into it. We can learn a lot from looking at recent patterns within your district, and we can learn a lot from talking to the planners. But there is a lot of speculation, of course, that goes into this. And it I think what we encourage this well, what we do encourage districts to do is to monitor and manage. So if you keep this, you know, keep this and look at it every year, and if things start to deviate from from, say, our middle, you know, from all the numbers in here, the in the middle line, the orange one, if things start to deviate from that, then it's an indication that some of our assumptions were off. Maybe there's more housing coming in, you know, than we expected, or maybe there's more families moving in than than what we expected. So if things start to deviate from this, then we would encourage you to certainly pursue like another updated forecasting report. Yeah, because it's very hard to it's it's hard to predict, you know, with complete accuracy.
So these aren't guaranteed numbers?
Yeah. So, yeah. Well, some some we have to be careful because some, you know, it's it's easy to take it's easy to take the numbers and be like, well, now we have a number and just start plugging it into all these different places. And we just want to always make sure that we it's, you know, it's our duty to caution folks about making sure that, you know, you at least check to see how it's doing each year if you're going to use it.
Now that you guys have done this work, can we go back to you every couple of years and have you just do a quick a quick update because you got the basics here?
There are there is there's some there's certainly in terms of like costs, there's some savings for coming back to us again since we did legwork to do this the first time. But it's but it is still a fairly decent effort to do because we kind of just we don't we don't just go in and try to like make some updates. We usually just do another full-fledged kind of analysis. But we can at least we can at least rely on some of the development data that we got and use that as a starting point for talking with planners and look to see how how our forecast did and maybe ideas for what to tweak. But it is still a fairly substantial effort for us. We do have we kind of have a there's sort of a variety of, I guess, frequencies that districts have us do the forecasting. I think two that well, one that has us do them every year, and I think it's a really good idea that they do that is it's really funny because their name is really similar to yours. It's Central Valley School District, which is outside of Spokane and Washington. They're growing fast, very fast. But then some other ones, like we're doing work first in Homer School District in north of Seattle, and they're growing very slowly. So they're having us do it every two or three years. So I think it kind of depends on how fast things are changing and also just, you know, even if things are changing fast for you, but if if we're lucky and our forecasts like turn out to be, you know, spot on, then maybe you don't need to get an update if if they're still, you know, proving to be accurate, you know, two or three or four years away. So it's kind of whatever makes sense to you.
I think you have to look at your current capacity and where your constraints are going to be like. If you look at the data in the high school, it's not going to be a problem. Middle school, this study suggests we're not going to have a problem, but we already yeah, but I would even wonder if that's true in the short term because.
I would not disagree with that.
Yeah. And of course, elementary schools and the balance across the elementary schools is what we really have to figure out and the potentially rebounder, you know, boundaries on that.
And we do we do do rebounding work, not to put in a plug for ourselves.
You're going to be busy doing that in Portland for a while.
That's maybe what my question is, is so this, you know, what are what are the next steps? You guys have been looking at this data for a while.
Yeah, I think we're we're to a point of pulling the Facility Committee together and really diving into this data. And is are we at a point to, I think, a couple options? As you said, do we is a first step potentially looking at a rebounding? Is that the best choice? Or secondly, are there concerns that this we have enough information to move forward with a bond? And is that, you know, when and where, based off of the data, what that might look like? I think that there are some in conversations with Cease and several of you, you know, some of the planning that was on the last bond potentially could be a big part of this conversation. I think that's using this data and then going back to those plans and, you know, potentially looking, do we want to look at a rebound or what that might look like? I think it's going to be a conversation that we need to have. And I think that's going to be important for us to pull a Facility Committee together to start that conversation as well. Do you want to add anything else, Cece, to that? I think that's that's really I mean, this is showing that there could potentially be some things that we need to do in the next few years. And I think that we will track it. We are there are things that we are working through right now. Obviously, I'm having to close certain grade levels because of the enrollment. And so there are things that we're just going to have to continue to look at this spring and say, do we need to start that process? As an example, if that is maybe a first step, I'm not saying that it will be, but I think that it's time that we pull keep people together in the community as with you all to start having those conversations. Other questions for them or? Thank you, gentlemen. I greatly appreciate it. This is what we wanted, and it will help us start to make those plans as we move forward. So I thank you for that.
Thanks for the opportunity to do work for you. We love doing this.
Yeah, we appreciate it.
Yeah, I want to say these guys were really patient with us because pulling information and numbers and they asked for things like our bus routes, right? Where do buses go to to pick up students? And some districts have a nice routing software where that's pretty easy to pull, and we have them on Excel spreadsheets. They asked for our boundary maps and things. If there was any chance we had that, you know, in any kind of database format. And we looked back and the last time that work was done, we got PDFs of it. So they got to use our PDFs to create this. And so they've been very patient with us. And really, now we have this information. We have it in a format that we'll be able to use it. And I also want to thank some of your fellow board members sat in on this presentation already once. And so thanks to Don and Steve and Steve. And we had some outside folks, our partners at the City of Monmouth, City of Independence, and actually a professor of geographical information systems from the university sat in too, just to sort of vet the methodology, make sure that, you know, we kind of felt comfortable that this really did represent our community and they weren't doing a study based on Portland. Right? So it's been a been a great process and I think we have a really good product going forward. So I just want to thank everyone who participated.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Aren't you glad that it's not a snow night?
At least they weren't going to Elton.
Something strange or anything.
So we are down to Cece, I think.
Because of five years, you're going to start to see the first.
Oh, my gosh. Exciting for you.
She's looking at me like maybe.
Coming through town much like this year. I don't know. We're currently holding.
All right. All I have for you is the summary financial report, and it was our general appropriations report, which had no items of particular concern. Unless there are questions, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda. Okay. I don't have a maintenance and capital projects report for you at this time, other than I will give you the resolution on the supplemental budget. So when you get to the business agenda, you can have that exact amount that we're approving. But Alex Singer is here tonight to talk to you about food service.
So I'm here to talk about the Food Service Department. You have our financial, our fund income statement in your packet. As you can see, the trend we've had with negative balances is still continuing in a negative direction. But we do have a tiny bit of bright light. We've taken a new tack to got getting away from instead of just the emailing and the letters, we've taken to direct phone calls to families. And we got a little bit of late start on that, but today alone, we pulled in at almost $550 back, which is a small step in the right direction. So we hope to keep moving that forward. One thing trying to analyze a lot of our numbers, we've seen with the or we've spoken in the past about families that are afraid to apply for free and reduced. And pulling some numbers, it looks like the reduction of not only that, we also have less students registered to the program from the district, and that's probably about a quarter of our loss. And about 40% of the loss could be related to looking at the percentage of where the students were last year, brokered down between free, reduced, and paid, and the shift of those students going from reduced or free to paid. We're seeing a considerable amount of reduction in our reimbursements, even though the meals served are not down quite that far, but the amount of our reimbursement is down considerably, and it has to do with where they sit in those groups. One thing that we've or we're continuing ways to find to spur increases, we've brought some new ideas to the food, brought some try to bring some more excitement. We threw a grant through the NFL and the Dairy Council, the blenders that I've spoken to before. We've started doing smoothies, and we've done parfaits, and we've introduced omelets into breakfast to spur more students coming to eat and also giving them more protein in the morning to help them make their way through the day. Hopefully, that will help their educational part of the day. Do you have any questions?
Do we have a sense of are we are we we are serving fewer meals this year than we did last year? Do we have a sense of how many that is? Or I'm just looking at something other than dollar figures in terms of what?
No, yes. I could I could give you lots of numbers. But during the school year, our supper meals are actually up by almost a third, which is great. But our lunches are down by almost 10% and breakfast is down about 8% for actual meals. So that works out to about 29 suppers a day up, 128 lunches down a day, and 75 breakfasts down a day.
And our enrollment is basically flat. So we've got fewer kids buying lunch, basically. Is that?
Yeah. As far as comparing students that are eligible for the program, we're down about 1%, which is about which is about 47 bodies on a daily basis.
The odd thing with that is free breakfast has always been free. And that's free to everyone anyway. So the fact that we're sort of down in breakfast is a little bit puzzling, doesn't seem to be correlated to some of the other things we think might be happening.
There's probably some breakfast that I wouldn't take, even if it was free.
Well, we've we tend to find the items they like the best and push forward. And we're talking with students, getting feedback from them, what they like the best, and really trying to bring that's why we added a lot more yogurt. We've added hot scrambled eggs, just trying to do different. We've switched to a different kind of French toast that actually has more egg in it, and actually is a little heartier that they seem to like. So we've really been trying to listen to what the students like.
Do you have these numbers broken down by school?
Not in front of me, but yes.
So so the negative balances as well, you have broken down by school?
Yes, I can break it down by school.
Do you have any idea?
I don't I don't have it in front of me, but I could I could. If you have any specific particulars, I'd be happy to.
Well, I'm just wondering because it, you know, IES, I think we talked about this last year. Free and reduced is 95%. What is the percentage for what is?
IES for IES, the negative or free and reduced is it's about 70% in the 70s.
Right. So they would qualify for free lunch, correct?
Yes and no. They would not qualify at 100%. The district would still have to make up the difference. It's not there's the free and reduced percentage, but there's also a direct certification percentage. And for the the direct certification percentage, for us to be reimbursed at 100%, it has to be 62 and 1/2%. And we're considerably lower than that on the direct cert. That's the the list of importance. We've certainly looked.
I'm just wondering if your negative balance is pretty high at IES, if it would benefit to go that direction?
I don't think it's necessarily higher there. Since we do have more students on the free program, there's less running up of a balance. But I could give you the specific numbers.
We'll get those, and then I can put them in a Friday report to you all.
Any other questions?
We don't have kids not eating, right?
Only by choice, if it's if it would only be the students' choice. I do know there's having the food trucks now in the in the parking lot, it draws some more of the high school students. You know, that's that's always a danger for us. The more food they see out there, the more things walking away.
Okay.
All right. Thank you.
Anybody else got any questions?
Thank you, Alex.
Thank you.
Thanks, Alex.
Thanks, Alex.
All right, me. I'm going to go as fast as I can because we do have a few first readings of policy. So and then I've got two updates that I just want to share with with the board.
All right, me, I'm going to go as fast as I can, because we do have a few first readings of policy, so, and then I've got two updates that I just want to share with, with the board. So as you're looking at, there's, and a couple of these that I'm sharing with you is information only, because I think it's important, when we talk about administrative regulations, we have the ability to make the changes, and then again, part of it is some of the information we want to give for you. The first one, IKFB is focused on graduation exercises. It's just minor language changes, and it's specific to how we publicly celebrate the graduation exercise, so you'll see minor changes within that policy. Right behind that is IKFAR, which is the administrative regulation for high school completion options. Again, this is information only, but it's important, because what we had, what we did is, we had the incorrect number of credits under modified diploma, which is only 24, so we wanted to correct that and make sure that it was in the AR correctly. So as I shared, that's information only for you. The next one is IKC, and again, this is under instruction. This is focused on the class rankings, and this policy is changes to both the valedictorian and salutatorian procedures for identifications of these rankings for seniors. There has been some things in the last couple of years, so we've made some changes to make it a little bit more clearer. We're still, I've been in conversation, this is first reading, I had a conversation with our legal counsel, and I'm working with Principal Servigna on one section that we may need to add a little bit more information tied to the committee if there is, for example, if we get a handful of kids that qualify, and then making some of those decisions that a committee might review that. So we're in the process potentially of adding a little bit more language, which then we'll go through a second reading next board meeting. IGBC, which is specific to Title I, and changes to having parental and family involvement. There are some significant language changes in the Title I planning, as you can see. This plan ensures that all children receive a high-quality education to close the achievement gap between children's meeting challenges, both in state academic standards and students not meeting these standards. It is a federal guidance and where we get funds for Title I schools specifically. Some of that language includes how we monitor the progress, identify and address any disparities, effective parental involvement, both looking at services not only school-wide, but targeted specifically at certain student groups, coordination of services, effective transitions, and that's talking from different grade levels, and looking at reducing discipline practices. There's also language that's specific to the development of the plan, and that how we communicate that via through meetings, other communication materials, and then integrating parent involvement in that process, as well as defining appropriate roles for community-based organizations. So we'll continue to have this conversation about Title I as it relates to not only how we build strategic plan, the district plan, as well as school improvement plans, which we will be sharing more about here in the, in the future.
Are these changes a result of the changes in the law, or are they changes that we're making to be more?
They are in the law, it's, these are coming specifically from OSBA, and federal guidance of having more parent involvement. And again, as we talk about the strategic goals, that is one of the big things when we talk about family involvement, and how we go about doing that to make sure our plans are shared with our families, that potentially are identified as Title I schools. The next one, again, under instruction, IGBAK, this is dealing with special education and the availability of state application. This policy has just some minor changes in language, and is specific to the district's documents related to eligibility funds under IDEA. Minor changes include financial information related to revenue and expenditures, related to excess costs, which we already do, school-wide programming, documenting, and reporting. I think it's very important that, as we say this, that these requirements of just how we document that do not release or make public any personal identifiable information, so I want to make that clear with some of those changes in that, in that policy.
It's interesting to see all the.
Changes in the ORs, yes.
Holy moly.
Yes, and you will see a lot in the legislative in regards to special education this session, so we'll be filling more in about that as well. The next one is IGBAJ, which is really focused on special education and free, appropriate public education, also known as FAP. This policy has minor changes, and really it's specific to the admittance of resident school-aged children with disabilities to a free education. So that's just minor changes in the policy. And then you will see also in here, the AR, and again, information only that it's tied to the policy, and again, there's just new administrative language related to public charter schools. So we don't have public charter schools, but they do recommend that we put that information in, so it is in there.
If we ever have one requested.
Correct. The next one, IGBAH, is again, under instruction, specific to special education and the evaluation procedures. These again are minor changes, specific to how we go about evaluation procedures for special education. So again, some language change tied to ESSA, et cetera. The next one, IGBAC, also under instruction and tied to special education and personnel. This just is also minor changes, and it's specific to really looking at the special education personnel and the requirements they are to have, and again, minor changes to that. The next one, IGBA, again, under instructions, students with disabilities, child identification procedures, and these are just minor language changes, again, specific to our processes for students with disabilities and how they are identified, and those procedures that go with them. A lot of this is dictated by state and federal law, so again, just minor changes with that. And then the last one is policy GCBDC, as well as GDBDC, under personnel, and this is specific to dealing with, should we have students or staff that have domestic violence, harassment, sexual assault, or stalking leave. So if we have staff or students in those types of positions, this is new language that helps us really identify what types of documentation or certification we might need to support putting, or having that ability to go out on leave. And again, it is specific to those areas, specifically to domestic violence, harassment, sexual assault, and stalking. And again, all of this is related to Oregon revised statutes. So questions about any of those, just on first reading? We are getting close, I'm not going to, I'm not going to, I'm not going to say we're there yet, but every time I, every month that I do this, we are, we are getting close, and I will be, we will be in very good shape moving forward. So the only last two pieces I want to share with you, one is specifically about Independence Elementary, they have been identified as a comprehensive school. So I just want to give a little bit of information, this past November, I received a letter from the Oregon Department of Education identifying them as a comprehensive school. The comprehensive supports for improvement status include schools in the bottom 5% of all schools in the state of Oregon. This letter received in November didn't give us a lot of information, but it did tell us that both Dr. Smith and I needed to be in a meeting in February, which we attended a few weeks ago, to really get a better understanding of what specifically this was going to entail, and they shared that with us, really focusing on year one, which we are in right now, of a three-year process at Independence. Some of these initial steps include developing a school improvement plan, that's due to the state August 30th. We actually have not only the district improvement plan or strategic plan, as well as our school improvement plans are all due August 30th, so we will be starting that work with our buildings and principals. There's some, there is some additional funding that comes with this status, I wouldn't say it's a lot, but there is some additional funding. And this afternoon, Dr. Smith and I informed the staff of this comprehensive status. I also want to say I appreciate, because at this meeting in attendance, we had district office staff that included Mr. Clark, Ms. Howman, Dr. Vickery, Ms. Zimans, as well as our union leadership, with Laura Waite and Jason Volcek, who are our CEA president and vice president, as well as our OSCE president Denise Chase. I think it's important, especially when we have these difficult information that we have to share, that we continue to work together as leadership in supporting the school, and so it was really nice to have everyone present today as Dr. Smith and I were sharing with, with the staff. In this meeting, we shared, and it's specifically a couple areas that we are level one, it's the state English arts and math achievement, and the regular attendance data that we are considered level one. The state's achievement levels are rated one through five, and level three is, has been identified as the state average, so I think that's important. So again, the level ones are the low, really the 5% lowest, level twos tend to be the lowest 10%, and again, it just, it just works through that way. But in that process, what we also got to share with them is, over the past several years, their growth median for both English language arts and math are at level four. So as much as we are struggling with the overall passing of the test, we have had great growth and are actually proficient or exceeding what other school districts from a growth perspective. So we were really excited to share that with the, with the staff today. Some of the other things we highlighted as successes that they've already, because really what we've been focusing on, and I, I shared with them today, even as I was coming in, as you were interviewing me, and as I was looking at the data, I was concerned that if ESSA had some sort of process in Oregon, and from reading the initial documents, I had an assumption that potentially IES was going to fall into that, to that category as I came in as a superintendent, so we, but we shared with them the successes that they're doing with their committee work, their focus on culture and climate, that place is moving in a positive direction, and what they're doing with both staff and students, their implementation of System 44, which is really focused on, it's a tiered intervention focused on literacy. So we're starting to move in a positive direction, and had a really good conversation with them today. Some of these shifts include partnership between Independence, the district, and the Oregon Department of Education. I think that's integral, we talked about that today, that this is partnership, and how we will collaborate together as we go through this, and that the district's an integral part when it relates to leadership supports, and then the monitoring implementation of the plan and the process. I talked a lot, and you all have heard me, that we do it together, right? Unfortunately, this is sort of a top-down, yes, it's coming, but working with the building, because they're going to be the ones that build the plans, and we'll, we'll be asking them hard questions to make sure that we're moving in the right direction, so that we can develop a really good plan with the staff and the community. And this is focused on continuous improvement, so I, I, we shared today, even at the meeting, that's one of our goals, staff leadership and continuous improvement. So we talked about just how that correlation, as we looked and built our strategic goals, this ties right into that with that continuous improvement process. Some of the first steps, they will develop a mission vision specific to IES, we want them to tie that to, obviously, the district goals. They'll need to do a needs assessment, which we've started some of that, with a hand, with an assessment called the Tiered Fidelity Inventory. We did a little bit of that last year with behavior, and we'll continue to do some assessment both on the behavioral side and the academic side moving forward, because that's one of the first steps that we need to, to do. And then they'll start to build a strategic plan, and so that is due, like we said, to this fall, or excuse me, this August. They'll then, over the next two years, implement that plan, monitor the work, and then we will adjust and just have a continuous feedback loop over those three years. I have great faith in the leadership, when you look at some of the things in the year and a half that I've been here, that they've already implemented. I think that there's some hard work ahead, but we have really good leadership, not only in the, in the building principal, but also in the leadership within the building and the community. So I do think we're, this is going to be some hard work, but it's going to be some good work that we'll be able to do to move forward for our independent students. So before I go on to my next item, I just want to ask if there's any questions from any board members in regards to, to that status.
How's the staff feeling?
I thought we had a good meeting today, I think there were a handfuls of people that asked really good questions about the data, we, Dr. Smith and I, there's some more documents that we sent, we gave them sort of a snapshot of it this afternoon, but told them that we will share the more detailed report. But we had a handful of staff that said, let's go, let's get our, let's roll our sleeves up, and we need to start this work, and so I think we had good, good communication today as we start this process. There's handfuls of them that said to me, can we meet tomorrow, Jen? And I said, probably not, but we will, we will get going and build those in. So we have a team that's ready to start that work, and then we'll do some back and forth, and then sharing with you all as we build that. It's very interesting, we'll get to do this as we build the strategic plan, so there will be some side-by-side, as I continue to gather information and come to you, some of that will be shared throughout the district, so making sure that there is alignment as we move forward within both the accountability and, and the goal-setting.
How do we, something, so the improvement plan is due to ODE in August?
Yes, they talked about today, potentially trying to get it, the first draft done by the end of June.
Yeah, that's what I was trying to think through, is whether we could ask to have at least a draft or something ready, you know, three months ahead of time.
Yes.
Before the summer, before, you know, and, and not, I mean, to see what it is, to see what we can do to help.
Yeah.
So.
Yes, I think.
The sooner we get that, something in front of us that we can look at and talk and encourage and, and support.
Yep.
We gotta jump on it, is the kind of idea.
Yes, that was conveyed today as well, so I appreciate that. Other, any other questions for that? And then my last piece, I'm just going to add a little bit, little bit to what Ms. Waite said, on the 26th, I was really honored to travel with the team to Salem, and again, that team consisted of Director Mosher, Director Klein, we had OSCE member Cynthia Mathis, OSCE president Denise Chase, CA president Laura Waite, CA vice president Jason Volcek, Principal LaBounty, Principal Smith, and myself. We met that day with six representatives and staff, as well as two senators and staff. And again, as Ms. Waite shared, our goal was that we were going to be focusing on school improvement funding, specifically to student health and safety, class size, class sizes, well-rounded education, and more learning. But again, when we, when we showed up at the Oregon School Board Association, we received some just concerning information, so our shift that day really focused on supporting the governor's state school funding budget of $8.97 billion. So we spent most of the day focused on that, we talked about the importance of the funding. I'll be honest, I've never been so proud in my short year and a half here to watch this team work together. As Laura said, just the diversity that we brought to the table in the conversation, I think was very impactful. It was a little bit of a stressful day, because that was not what we were expecting, because we had prepped as a team the Friday before, based off of just information that we had been, had been shared with us. And so we, the team truly advocated for students and staff, not only in Central, but as well as across the district, excuse me, across the state. I asked them what, asked really hard questions of legislators, so that they understood the importance of the investing in Oregon. It was really fun, I was honored, really, I just stood a little bit in Senator Winter's office, and I was proud to be the superintendent of Central School District, because they were just advocating and sharing their stories with the staff member, to really talk about the funding being at $8.97 billion. We know that later this week, we believe that we will hear the first numbers from the co-chairs, we're hearing either Wednesday, or potentially no later than Friday, at least at this point, so, and again, that's specific to the state school fund, so we hope that day, from an advocacy standpoint, has helped shift that. The day we were there, one of the lobbyists for OSBA was smiling and looked at me, and she's just smiling, and I said, why are you smiling? Because we were working so hard, and she smiled and said, it's working, you guys are doing good work, keep having those conversations with the legislators, because they're starting to feel the pressure. So again, I am so thankful to the team, I think we're going to have other staff that are going to continue to show up to support the, really the funding of that.
We put them on the defensive, because they didn't even know, part of that, where that 877 number came out, and if, the cat got let out of the bag ahead of time, and so they were supposed to either release their number Friday or today.
And they have not.
And they have not, because they're resetting, and the pressure's on from inside and from the outside, and we just told them, we can't do that, we can't do this, so.
It will be different conversations, I will tell you this, Cease and I have already started to look at numbers, this will be different conversations if it is below 8.97, and we had some significant conversations as a team. And we had some significant conversations as a team, and what that really means, and just some quick, you know, down and dirty numbers of what that might look like. So again, we're hoping the advocacy helped. I think that we are preparing on multiple levels of both for additions and potentially cuts, depending on that. I think we don't have a choice in that process, and we will be thoughtful in that, in talking with administration, and then administration having conversations with their staff, because I think that's very important as we start this process together. So again, I'm not, we're not jumping too much yet, because we think we've had some positive movement from what we did on Tuesday. Like I said, they said the number was gonna be out Friday, and clearly it wasn't. So there will be more to come. There, there may be times that I'm gonna come to all of you as board members, that we will have to set up meetings with our senators, or other senators, or our representatives to have some pretty intentional conversations. So just know I may continue to reach out to all of you, as well as our, our staff in that advocacy as we move forward. So, positive and some concerns.
It worked, because they didn't roll out that number today.
Is, is it a revenue issue, or is it a prioritization issue?
I, I think, yes. I would say yes to both. I think that there is.
Make it a revenue issue, but they can't, I mean, you can't.
Yeah.
So they, they shared with us that they're talking about a 10% cut across the board on every budget.
And that's to, that's to balance the budget.
That's to balance.
Holistically. So that's part of where we're, we're seeing that.
But they're also trying to balance it, I believe, really hard on the back of the kids. And we just gotta tell them that we can't do that. So personally.
There were some really, there were some, and I'll just leave it at this, some hard, hard questions were asked by a couple of our staff, and I was surprised by some of the responses from the legislative, legislative people. And we had some really authentic conversation as a team of, do they really want that to happen? And so again, I think that there was, the work that we did on Tuesday, as well as the other districts that were with us, I do think impacted it, and that's why we don't have the number yet. That's why they're looking potentially at releasing it later this week.
They're making it bigger.
So we hope, we will, we shall see. More to come. Consent?
So board report, upcoming, upcoming activities. Next board meeting will be April 1st. Community chat invites have been sent to the board on Google Calendar. Budget committee meeting is April 15th at 6 o'clock. And so we are down to consent agenda. And before we do that, so that'll approve the, the consent, approval of the consent agenda approves the minutes, and the second reading is the policy, but does that approve the policy recommendations here?
No, yes, this morning was first, yes, it was first readings only.
Oh, it's first reading only?
Yeah, but the second, this was from last month.
Okay, so this is, this is a first reading.
But you are approving the second readings and final readings of last month's policies.
Okay.
And we're also approving the personnel recommendation as part of it?
Correct, and the personnel recommendations are part of that as well. And again, that is specific to the March 15th deadline that we are required to, to complete that.
And this includes the out of district, out of district travel as well, right? The consent agenda?
Nope, that comes next. That will come next in the business agenda.
Okay.
So in the renew, non-renew, is there any, are there any issues in there that we should be aware of? I mean, there's always some that don't get renewed, but is that?
We continue to work through those processes at the building levels.
I move we approve the consent agenda.
Yeah, see, this other person showed up on your side.
So I can talk now.
Do I hear a second of approval of the consent agenda? Seconded by Jerry. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. So.
Steve, was there a, wasn't there a PLC gonna be this month, too? For us, or is that getting scratched?
I think there should be. Should be every other month, but it might, might not be because of the budget meeting.
Let me check.
See the district by calendar?
I have it on the 18th.
You're right.
That is correct. We do have it on the 18th. Thank you for catching that.
On what date?
March 18th. And that may be a good day for us, too. We may have a better picture of, from where we stand financially, so we could have some of that focus on some of the potential information that we do receive.
Plus, we can have leftover green beer.
Okay. So we are, do we have to approve the business, or their trips?
Yes.
Or, okay, so the first one we're being asked to approve is the out-of-state trip for the Acadaca folks. And if you had a chance to read all that stuff, it's pretty amazing what they're gonna accomplish. So do I hear a motion to approve their out-of-state trip?
I still move.
Moved by Jerry. Do I hear a second? Seconded by Penny.
Peggy.
Peggy. Where did that come from?
It is 8:30. It's been a long meeting.
All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. The next one is this out-of-state trip request for the symphonic choir. Do I hear a motion to approve their trip?
I move to approve that trip. I'll second that.
Moved and seconded by Christina and Peggy.
Do I need to recuse myself, since I'm chaperoning that trip?
No, you just need to pay double.
It's a financial benefit to you to do so.
Yep.
So all those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries.
Just a question on this, just curiosity question.
What do you, we just need to approve adoption of the flow analytics plan? Or do we just gotta?
Hey, Steve?
Hold on, there's a question from Doc.
I just have a curiosity question.
Sure.
Did we approve the, the cheer team?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, that was in October.
Yeah. Okay, I guess I just didn't remember.
It was, we did it several months before. She got it, she was, she got it in early, so.
Okay. That's why I didn't remember.
Yes.
You didn't move to approve that one. Somebody else did.
If I don't, if I don't move to approve it, I don't remember it.
Okay, so we got three things to go. Do I hear a motion to adopt the flow analytics plan?
And this, because there's a lot of data there, the option is to table that if you want to really look it over. But adopting it means we're going forward with this on our, at least next few years assumptions, as we heard this could take refinement, but basically saying, we, we accept this as a plan of where we think we need to go.
It's the best we got.
Well, you could go out and count, knock on doors, and ask folks if they're gonna have any babies in the next six, five, six years.
So we're not, we're not, we're accepting their enrollment forecast.
Correct.
Right.
For planning purposes?
For planning purposes, yes.
We've never done that before. I'm just.
Have we ever done this before?
It's really a statement that we, we believe we need this kind of data to go forward and do more planning. The last population study that was actually done was for the high school bond, and that was just kind of right before the recession, and things changed drastically. That's kind of the last adopted long-range plan we have to base numbers on, so.
I'm trying to think of how to word a motion, so I'll take a stab at it. I move that we approve the flow analytics enrollment forecasts for long-range planning purposes?
Mm-hmm.
I'll second that.
Do I hear a second?
I just did. You're completely ignoring me now.
I was laughing at him, and I didn't hear you. Okay. The move is seconded. All those in favor, raise your right hand.
It is 8:30.
You guys make a motion, I look over here, I don't, anyway. Okay. So the next one is, we have two requests for sitting on the budget committee.
I move that we approve Mary Schellenberger and Mike Mirman to become members of our budget committee.
Second.
Moved by Steve and seconded by Jerry. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. So if you can think of anybody in your zones, have them send something to Cease.
Or anybody, period.
Or else somebody else in another zone.
And I would, again, I'm gonna say this just publicly, because I do have the option. If there are people out there that are interested in the budget committee, with some of the things that we are going to have to work through, it's very important that if you have an interest in K-12 and the budgeting process, we are looking for additional voices to support that. And again, I think it's, it's very important for us as we go through this process, especially this biennial.
And so the last thing on our list here is adoption of the supplemental budget for the Henry Hill casualty claim. And Cease has this really nice document. Has everybody had a chance to read this? Take a look at it?
So I move that we approve the resolution to adopt a supplemental budget in the amount of $71,858 in the capital improvements account of General Fund 100.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
It's been moved in second, and all those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion passes, and we're down to comments by individual board members.
Since it's the last thing that we did, I was just gonna comment on, it would be nice to explore at some point in time, the potential to, I don't know if it's a negotiation with the insurance, I mean, it's through PACE. But I know that the reaction tonight even was, sort of, we're sort of forced to replace exactly what we had, even though we don't really need what we had, kind of seems counterintuitive. I don't know that it's worth, you know, calling a special meeting of the school board for, but it seems like that, you know, since, since the experience is fresh in our mind, it would be nice to, you know, at least send a letter off or something and say, you know, in the future, if this happens, it'd be nice to use this money in a more productive way.
I, I did explore some of that with them, actually. We, we kind of had the option to not take advantage of the settlement.
Well, yeah, you can not take the money, which is even dumber.
Because it is replacement cost. We would get a certain amount of that.
Right.
Basically, obviously, we would get the demolition and all of that. So I asked about that, and I, I asked even potentially about citing the portable in a different location.
Right, yeah.
But those costs would not, for example, this one, we don't have to do grading work, we don't have to do things like that. But these are portable.
Right.
So I, I asked.
So you didn't win the argument.
So I didn't.
So you're not gonna connect them? That's what you're saying?
We're going to connect it, but.
Cease, how much does it cost, the portables at the schools? How much, how expensive is a classroom for that?
Well, this, this one that we'll have here is a single classroom, and the bid for that is in your paperwork, which was about $63,000. The portables we just placed at Ash Creek, because it was a double classroom, and it had restrooms attached, so it had all the plumbing and those things, so that was $160,000.
It's not the world's worst situation, but it seems like there should be a better answer.
Yeah, well, like I say, at least it's a portable. If we ever needed to move it, we could entertain the expense of that separately.
I had a comment. I had the privilege of attending the Fiddler on the Roof performance at, at the high school on Friday, and it was so well-done that I kept forgetting that I was sitting in a high school auditorium. It was phenomenal. So just want to thank everyone that was involved in making that happen publicly.
What she said.
I just want to say it was pretty amazing going over to Salem, and I was really kind of disappointed we weren't talking about all the great things we're gonna be looking at in the future for our kids. But I liked the way the team, you know, we approached it and really went after them and saying, hey, this isn't good enough. And we put several of them back on their, on their heels going, whoa, whoa, wait a minute, this is the first I've heard of this. And I said, well, you know, that's the first we've heard of it, too, and so we're kind of disappointed. And so we made, made our points to them, and, and obviously, we brought pressure to them, and that's what we need to do. And so it's, it's time to be aggressive and say enough is enough, and it's time to, you know, fund at QEM and, and do the quality education model and get our kids the education opportunities that they need. And I was very, very disappointed that we didn't have an opportunity to talk about our future versus trying to get back to where we are now. And it's gonna be even more important for us to reach out to our friends and our community in the, in the future when they do release the number, because if it's anything less than $10 billion, we need to be just calling and just phone calling and talking and, and saying enough is enough. So there, you know, part of the, part of the, my funding issue thought is this, if you fund education on the front side, you're not gonna be funding prisons and everything on the backside. Let's, let's fund the front side and not be funding the backside, and see how much of a change we can make. If it takes us getting 10% and they are only getting five, do it and see what happens. We can always change it down the road. But it's time to stop, you know, trying to balance the budget on the backs of our kids. It's time to move forward. Anyway, with that, if nobody else has anything, we are adjourned.